Good evening. I'd like to call the Thursday, February the 7th, 2019 Special Meeting Public Works Session to Order. And at this time, I would like for you to stand for a moment of silence. Afterwards, Ms. Allen will give Pledge of Allegiance and the Mission Statement. Amen.
She's not here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I shall read them. Atkinson, would you mind reading the mission?
There she is. She was looking at me, Clyde. I'm like, did my name change?
I just thought she had got in.
The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
You are wonderful. Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen.
Present.
Ms. Atkinson.
Here.
Mr. Barnes.
Here.
Ms. Barnes.
Here.
Mr. Lamb.
Here.
Reverend Patillo.
Here.
Mrs. Schumay.
Present.
Mrs. Williams.
Present.
Mr. Parent.
Present.
All members are present.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda for tonight, and I do have a, an added item. It would be 3.0, and it'll be closed meeting. We need to go into a closed meeting tonight.
Move for approval.
Second.
As amended?
As amended. Second. Any discussion?
Closed meeting.
Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
Mrs. Schumay.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Parent.
Yes.
Ms. Adams.
Thank you. All right. The next item is that we are in a closed meeting.
We've got to read it.
I'm sorry. I've got that done. Motion's been made.
I haven't.
Oh, that's right. You've got to read. Y'all got me confused. Go ahead.
It's all good.
I move that the board enter into a closed meeting on the provisions of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the following purposes. Consideration of student disciplinary matters permitted under subsection 8.2.
Okay, that's it. Just number two.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made. Second. Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
Mrs. Schumay.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Parent.
Yes.
Ms. Shannon.
Thank you. BSBA School Board Clerk, Deputy Clerk, Certificate of Appreciation goes to Kathy Chambers. It says, "An appreciation of your dedication and hard work for public education through continued service to the students of the Commonwealth of Virginia. Scoob Ward Clark, Deputy Clerk, Appreciation Week, February the 18th through the 22nd, 2019, signed by the State President, Gina Patterson, the Executive Director, and we thank you very much for all of your hard work."
Yes.
This reads, "BSBA School Clerk, Deputy Clerk, Certificate of Appreciation to Brenda Stewart, in your appreciation of our appreciation of your dedication and hard work for public education through continued service to the students of the Commonwealth of Virginia. School Board Clerk, Deputy Clerk, Appreciation Week, February the 18th, 22nd, 2019, signed by the State President Foster and Gina Patterson, the Executive Director, and thank you for all." I think they want a picture.
You're welcome.
Yes.
I was a pretty.
Ms. Patterson.
Please don't knock me down.
And I know that you're not officially the clerk, our board clerk, but you're always here, and I want to thank you because you're my right hand as well, and I know you assist these ladies in everything that they do, so we want to make sure we recognize you. Thank you. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you. You're pretty. You're pretty. Such a pleasure. Thank you. Needing your. Mr. Marfree.
Kathy, would you like some? Next item is consideration of the new CTE programs for 2019, and Mr. Hill is here. I'm sorry we had to put you off to this month, but we had so many cases last month, so.
The weather's nicer this week.
Seventy-three degrees. That's pretty good.
I know you would probably prefer.
I believe you have before you the list of the new courses, if you had those back even after summer retreats for this coming full year. I'm just going to highlight a couple items. First of all, the teacher tomorrow is basically, if you look at it, is a homegrown type of program. The other school districts use this. For instance, Virginia Beach, I believe, currently has 27 teachers hired that went through this program. Students will finish the program in the high school. If they meet the criteria while they're in college, they can come back and have a contract with Portsmouth Public Schools to teach, so you can call that where you're at. The other two programs, the one is early childhood, we already have. We would like to link that with dual enrollment. It's a natural fit with the teachers for tomorrow also. A lot of those students take that program. They want to be teachers, so we feel like that will be a good combination. And then finally, with the entrepreneurship, everybody wants to have their small business and wants to own a business. If you look at Virginia Beach, they have an academy. That's something we can look into. We could link in with TCC if we like. There's also a Norfolk State link that we could use. So these are very good courses, I believe, that will add some more value to what we already offer and hopefully keep our kids interested. So unless you have any comments, I can wait and answer.
Ms. Allen?
It's not pertaining to these particular courses, but for the hospitality that is currently offered over at Wilson, is there an externship or anything with the Portsmouth Renaissance Hotel?
Currently, that program is not being offered. We didn't have the attendance that we would like, so we're going to bring that back and start it beginning of the fall. But there is a partnership with that.
Okay. And then secondly, with the pharmacy tech program, unfortunately, we weren't able to hear from them last month. When they're finished with that, are they able to sit for their certification when they're finished with that?
Yes, ma'am.
And then do we have any relationships with any other pharmacies currently in the city of Portsmouth for them to do their externships through them?
Yes, we're working with Walgreens and Rite Aid. As you know, Walgreens is buying out a lot of Rite Aids, so we're working with them.
I might suggest a couple of the mom and pop ones.
Yes.
Okay. Just.
Ms. Atkinson?
Just to follow up on the pharmacy tech, with the dispensary ban in Portsmouth, are we going to look into that for, as well? Okay.
We're just getting our feet wet with that this year, and we're looking to expand in this.
You know, that's my baby.
Thank you, Mr. Parent. Along with the dispensary, I know that it is a, it's a whole vertical production that's going to be here. So I was just wondering if we have reached out to Economic Development to work with, just to sit down and talk with them about the jobs that are going to be offered so that we can make sure that we have the courses available for our kids to go into that, that whole vertical. Okay.
We're currently sitting on our CTE advisory board, and they're working with them. They used to be Opportunity Inc., and they changed that name, and so we are working with them.
Are there any other of the CTE programs that we've kind of backed off away from besides the hospitality?
Let me see. Who's be there? Mr. Lamb?
And just real quick, as far as any of our programs that we're doing, well, hospitality and a couple of the ones that have been mentioned here, besides like the Renaissance or kind of like big players, if you will, I do like the idea of reaching out to, say, mom and pop businesses. I mean, along High Street, we've got some pretty amazing places to eat and so forth that I would think that with the culinary arts, the hospitality component there of getting those relationships or MOUs in place to actually help with that. I know that especially with culinary arts, there's a variety of different places along there that could fit.
If I can answer that, first of all, if we go back to Renaissance question, just keep in mind, 12 years we've had the program, we've had 10 different general managers. That kind of stunned the growth a little bit with that.
Right.
The culinary, we've worked with Roger Brown in the past and other restaurants so they get the top end and back end of the restaurant experience. We do internships where we bus the kids down to those programs. So we're trying to use the mom and pop. Goodwill used to have a relationship with us also where we worked with them, and they gave them the on-the-job training and had resumes, and we also worked with the restaurant side. If I could just save a day here real quick for everybody. On June the 5th, at 6:00 p.m., we're going to have a CTE signing day. You've heard of sports signing.
Yes. I'm excited about it.
We're going to have that at the Little Theater over at Woodrow Wilson at 6:00 p.m. We're hoping to have a moderator, Ashley Smith, from WVEC be there. And basically, students have gone through their apprenticeship programs, and we know they have jobs. We're going to have them there with their employer so the public can see that our pathways are working with jobs. And then one more savior day, because we're always busy in CTE land, as you know.
Mr. Parent.
Yes.
Ms. Shannon.
Thank you. Thank you.
We have a career fair, college fair, coming up at Wilson High School on March the 15th.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. The next item is discussion, and the reason why we wanted to put this on the agenda is
In the past, we've had it at different locations, but attendance has been sliding down to about 300, 200 students coming out, almost more teachers than students over the 12 years we had it. So this year, we're going to do it during the day, but we're going to have it at a
because we have a strategic plan, 2016 to 2021, and I'll just turn it over to Dr. Bracy
high school. We have already 40 vendors that are going to be set up. We're going to bus over students from the other two high schools, so they will be participating.
because that plan, we need to begin to update and all that in.
So instead of 200, we're looking at about 1,000 kids that we will be able to see. So this is a college and career day because we're tired of being separate sideways.
With the strategic plan, as Mr. Parent said, running from 2016 to 2021, we're going
We realize that, you know, you go to college for your career, you have a career, either
to be looking at some updates to it within the plan, not at this point looking at an
way, they're both a guy. Please, we look forward to having you out there for those events.
entirely new plan.
What's the date for that one?
Ms. Atkinson?
But we have that on the agenda for February 20th for the CNI Committee to take a look
March 15th, Friday.
That's okay.
Hours will be from 9:45 to 1:15.
at, and from there, we'll start with the revisions, just to update, make whatever amount of adjustments
That's okay.
And I'm sure that our clerk will be sending us some reminders.
I was going to say.
Thanks.
we need to within the plan.
Send a flyer.
We haven't, we haven't had a review of the committee since we got it started, but we
Okay, this is, there's no other discussion. This is roll call vote.
just wanted to let everyone know that it will be on the agenda, and we'll be having
What is your pleasure for the new CTE programs for 2019?
that discussion at that time.
Awesome. Move for approval.
Any other, any questions? Second. Hearing no discussion. I remember my first year I got on the board in '10, they read the strategic plan word Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson.
Yes.
for word.
Mr. Barnes.
Any of y'all remember that?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Well, anyway, I'm glad.
Yes.
Make the long meetings.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
Mrs. Schumay.
All right.
Yes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Dr. Bracy, the superintendent's FY 2019-20 estimate of needs.
All right.
I guess I better move. Need room here, sir?
Good.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Chairman Parent, Vice Chairman Patillo, and members of the school board. Tonight, I will share our estimate of needs for the school division for the upcoming fiscal year. This is one of the most important aspects of my job, to develop a practical and effective budget that meets the needs of children, staff, and schools. It is, as you know, a big responsibility, and I take it very seriously. Therefore, my budget overview will provide you with an opportunity to make critical decisions to solidify the future success of Portsmouth Public Schools. First, let's take a look at how the budget is physically organized. While the board is acquainted with how the budget is constructed, I believe it's important that we explain this to the public. The heart of the budget is the general fund, which shapes the balance between the revenues and expenditures involved in the day-to-day operation of the schools. As you can see, it is the largest part of this proposal, at 75 percent. The next largest fund is risk management, which represents 10 percent of the overall budget. Risk management accounts for all expenditures associated with our self-insurance health claim, insurance premiums, and working compensation claims. The grant fund consists of federal, state, local grant funding to be used for specific purposes. For example, this fund includes our special education grant, which you know provides additional resources to our students with special needs. This represents 10 percent of the proposal. Next is our cafeteria fund, is the 4 percent. Is an enterprise fund, which means it's a separate account designed to accept fees for a particular service, in this case, our food services. And finally, the textbook fund, which is named, the name implies the underwriting of textbooks and materials. It's the smallest part of the overall budget, at 1 percent. The budget is organized into five main funds, and each has a specific function, as you see on this slide. For this purpose of the presentation, I will focus on the general fund only because it pays for the day-to-day operations. It is also the fund where we have the most flexibility. However, I felt it important for the board and the public to see the fiscal year budget proposal in its entirety for all the funds that we manage. Now, let's take a closer look at our operating budget. Currently, it's about $145.3 million. At this time, I'm projecting next year's budget to be $151.2 million, which reflects a $5.9 million increase in the current year budget. This proposal includes several priorities identified by school board members, staff, and the community in the budget survey as well as internal meetings. These priorities are as follows. An employee salary increase, and additional positions to enhance student achievement, and a continued focus on student reports, as well as school climate and security enhancements. Later in the presentation, I will walk through those specific additions. My team and I have worked very hard to balance a conservative budget of need. However, in the past three years, we've had to cut it close to the bone of our budget. Now, we find ourselves at a crossroads where we cannot afford to forsake the needs of children, teachers, and schools. We do not have all the money to implement these important initiatives. It is also important to point out that the state has failed to provide enough money for the schools. For that reason, this proposal underscores the need to request additional funding from city council to accomplish these goals. Let's take a look at our current situation. As you will know, the largest portion of the funding comes from our state school fund. State money is largely based on enrollment, which is called average daily membership, or ADM. Our enrollment, like many other school divisions in Virginia, is projected to go down next year to about 13,000 students kindergarten through 12th grade. This enrollment data is what the state uses to determine how much money they give us for what is called basic aid. Basic aid is the core of our state funding. Therefore, since school enrollment is down, then we're expecting less in basic aid. Now, if we look at additional state funding in the other areas, such as lottery funds and money for at-risk students, it will slightly offset the money that we lose in basic aid, but there's less flexibility with those dollars because they must be used for specific purposes. This year, the biggest increase in state funds comes in the form of the compensation supplement for raise. So taking all of that into account, our state funds will go up about $3.3 million, and that has to be used for a variety of state mandated purposes. Therefore, we will still need about $2.6 million in additional revenue to fully fund all of the initiatives included in this budget. Families, staff, and community members have expressed that they want us to ask the city council for additional funding when there's a budget shortfall. Since the state has not provided enough money, then I also believe we should seek additional support from the city.
Okay.
My first initiative this year is the employee salary increase. Therefore, I'm proposing a 3 percent raise in this budget. Not only was this the number-one priority in the budget survey and meetings, but as superintendent, I believe it's critical to provide a raise in order to sustain school achievement and to remain competitive in the employee marketplace. I also think that the requirement is based on the governor's proposed budget. The governor's proposed budget requires school divisions in the Commonwealth to provide a 5 percent raise over the two years. As you recall, we provided 2 percent for this fiscal year, of 2018-19. Therefore, the school division would need to provide at least a 3 percent raise as of July 1, 2019, in order to be eligible to accept the state's compensation supplement revenue. Keep in mind, funding from the state is for the raise only and includes standards of quality, those SOQ positions, in which are minimum staffing standards for schools throughout the divisions of the region. We have to come up with the rest of the money for the other employees that are non-SOQ. In compliance with the governor's proposed budget, my proposal includes a 3 percent raise, which will cost us around $2.6 million. As an example, let's take a look at the teacher salaries as they make up the largest portion of our payroll. Portsmouth ranks fifth out of seven cities in the Hampton Roads with an average salary of $52,427. Just to put that into context, we had the third highest salary in the prior year, so we have fallen down two spots. As a point of reference, the state average for teacher salaries is $56,362. In order to retain the most qualified teachers, we need to keep pace with our neighboring school divisions. As a result, in conclusion of the 3 percent raise, it is essential to demonstrate to our employees their hard work is valued and appreciated. This year, I'm asking for about $1.9 million in order to enhance instructional programs, student support, and school safety. In the instructional category, we have included the following positions. The governor's proposed budget provided additional SOQ funding for school counselors. This will begin a multi-year initiative to reduce staff ratios at all levels, elementary, middle, and high. To comply with the reduction in staffing ratios, we're required to add five elementary counselors and one middle school counselor. An additional cosmetology teacher is needed for our CTE program due to increase in enrollment. State social studies standards are changing, and that means that the responsibility for development of accountable assessments is shifted to the school systems, and interventionalists is recommended to work with the current staff to accomplish this important task. We need to add three math coaches to our elementary schools, which the math scores are persistently at a low level of achievement. In total, these additions will cost us approximately $775,000. As we look at student support services, they are critical to the success of many of our students. As such, we have included the following to address areas where we can provide additional assistance to our students and their families. One limited English proficiency specialist to help with the growing population of students who do not speak English. Two attendance officers, now that attendance is included in criteria for state accreditation. These positions will assist us in evaluating attendance and truancy patterns. Three school social workers to identify issues that interfere with learning and to help students obtain the services that are needed. Homeschool liaisons at the seven non-Titel One schools, which includes all secondary and churchroom elementary schools, in order to match staffing at the Title One schools. As you all know, churchroom elementary is a non-Titel One school. These positions will also establish partnerships between families and schools to improve student achievement. These additions to the student supports will cost us approximately $625,000. As we all know, school climate and safety are vital to the operations of each school building. In light of this, we made the following school climate and safety additions a priority in this budget at a total cost of about $565,000. With that, we've included an in-school suspension staff member at each of our 13 elementary schools. This position will assist us with attendance and allow students to have consistency in instruction by remaining in the school setting. Continuing our focus with advanced safety initiatives, we're proposing that we add five school security officers. We would add one security officer to each of our three high schools and one to each of our preschool centers, Olive Branch and Mount Herman, who currently do not have any. Other budgetary additions total approximately $1.3 million and include the following. Restoration of a budget line for substitute teachers, which will reduce substantially in the fiscal year, the current fiscal year. Funding to support professional development so that staff members are well-trained and familiar with the latest in educational strategies that foster student success. Additional support of student software and classroom technology to ensure our students and staff have access to current technology resources to enhance and make the learning environment more engaging. An increase for rising utility costs for schools and other facilities. As you know, all school capital improvement projects in excess of $50,000 with a useful life of 10 years or more are submitted to the city for approval and inclusion in the city's capital improvement plan. As a result, we work closely with the city staff to identify and manage projects that are approved. For the next fiscal year, we have submitted the following projects for inclusion in the city's capital improvement plan. We've currently begun the process of planning the construction of the fourth middle school. The city has issued bids for architectural designs of the middle school, and we're currently reviewing the proposals. We've also included the bus fleet replacement in our CIP to request and ensure that our bus fleet remains in compliance with state guidelines for buses that need to be replaced according to student transportation. I trust I have made a compelling case for an increase in investment in Portsmouth Public Schools. I do think this slide makes a powerful case for improved funding. These numbers come from the superintendent's annual report for Virginia. You see the reference below. I fully understand the city of Portsmouth is dealing with stark economic reality. It has the lowest median income among the five Southampton Roads localities, and much of the city's land is tax exempt. Plus, the tunnel toes have deeply affected Portsmouth's economy. Yet, these factors do not change the imperative for the city to fully support the needs of its children. The state is also responsible. The level of state funding of schools is a problem for all Virginia school divisions. We are receiving a For the next fiscal year, we have submitted the following projects for inclusion in the city's capital improvement plan. We've currently begun the process of planning the construction of the fourth middle school. The city has issued bids for architectural designs of the middle school, and we're currently reviewing the proposals. We've also included the bus fleet replacement in our CIP to request and ensure that our bus fleet remains in compliance with state guidelines for buses that need to be replaced according to student transportation. I trust I have made a compelling case for an increase in investment, increased investment in enforcement public schools. I do think this slide makes a powerful case for improved funding. These numbers come from the superintendent's annual report for Virginia. You see the reference below. I fully understand the city of Portsmouth is dealing with stark economic reality. It has the lowest median income among the five Southampton Roads localities, and much of the city's land is tax exempt. Plus, the tunnel toes have deeply affected Portsmouth's economy. Yet, these factors do not change the imperative for the city to fully support the needs of its children. The state is also responsible. The level of state funding of schools is a problem for all Virginia school divisions. We are receiving approximately six million dollars less from the state than we did ten years ago. However, in order to provide the services that our students and communities deserve, again, we're requesting additional city funding of two point six million dollars to accomplish the initiatives included in this budget. In closing, the children of Portsmouth Public Schools are worthy of an increased investment from our state and city leadership. To make this happen, the city and schools must work together even more strategically at both the local and state level.
That's awesome.
There's much to gain in this approach. A strong school system is an engine of economic development, but most importantly, the children deserve the very best we have to offer. Members of the school board, this concludes my overview of the superintendent's estimate of needs. My staff and I stand ready to receive any questions or comments you may have.
Okay, I didn't see who handled, we'll go with Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Dr. Bracy. Quick question on the limited English proficiency specialist. What percentage of our population would be receiving this service? Or do you have a percentage of our students or count that doesn't speak English well or is proficient? Is this for like English as a second language, or is this?
Yes.
Okay. So then, what percentage of our students are not proficient in English, do you?
I know there has been a significant increase. I don't know if you all know the exact percentage, but I know we've.
I can get that information for you. Okay. We've had a significant increase, less than two percent. But it isn't just a percentage, it is the, the level of the needs. And so ESL students have different levels, and the same laws that, in a sense, apply to students with special education, we have to be in compliance with East, with East Hall students. What we know is that we have to increase our classroom self-contained classrooms, and we also have to increase our services for our students. But our population is growing at leaps and bounds.
So that's more so of a compliance thing, if we have.
It is a compliance.
Okay. So that's a compliance provision. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Anderson.
I know during our budget conversation, I suggested a thought of LCSW coming on board to help with more of the behavioral and mental health and PTSD-type situations our students are involved in. And your social worker aspect of hiring, are we looking at possibly bringing on a LCSW?
Well, I think the first thing that we're looking at is the increase in the number of social workers because it's, it's lower than what we have for the school psychologists, if I'm not mistaken. I think we have eleven school psychologists. We don't have eight social workers. So one of the first things we wanted to do was to try to at least bring the social workers up to par to where the, the school psychologists are. Because the social workers that we have now, I know that they're, they're tied to maybe three, four schools, so they rally that up a lot of time to do some of the, the intense chase, I guess, a little bit it would have as far as talking to the students and parents. So we're trying to get to that point. What you were saying, one of the things that, that we looked at in the budget is not necessarily this year looking at a particular position, but we may be able to contract some of those leads out on a as-need basis as the social workers and schools identify those needs. If we could look at contracting services to satisfy that.
Ms. Anderson.
Dr. Bracy, we just approved those new CTE positions or programs. Are those instructors already included in the budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Still am, then, Reverend Patello.
And Dr. Bracy, the, on the one slide where it talked about two point six million dollar additional revenues with regards to the pay scale and salaries, and you had brought up that only the three, or the five percent from the state is only for SOQ. I'm assuming that additional two point six is, is covering not only the SOQ, but the remainder of, of the positions.
Yes.
Outside of the SOQ. Okay.
Reverend Patello.
Thank you, Dr. Bracy, and thank you, Mr. Falk and your team for putting together this budget. I did want to say that in the finance committee meeting, my first question, we're looking at some of the projections, the salaries look a little inflated, but they actually include twenty percent benefits. So it was just kind of salary, looking at it also, and I want to add that to the conversation so you know.
Any other questions?
Can we get this, can we get this on our?
Can we get, can we get a copy of this?
Oh, absolutely.
Be great. All right. Thank you, Dr. Bracy.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the, was a roll call vote, consideration of a revised budget for fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-nine, twenty nineteen grant fund. This is chapter one, request to increase the grant budget due to increased state funding and carryover amounts of four million, two oh nine, two, two seven. Dr. Wynn, are you going to?
I just passed that round to instructions since you're.
Chairman Parent, Vice Chairman Patello, school board members, Dr. Bracy. Standing before you tonight, you have this information in your packet. This is for your consideration, a resolution to increase the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen grants budget due to grant award increases that we get from time to time during the year, as well as to add carryover unspent federal and state grants with periods of performance that are greater than the twelve-month period in which the fiscal year resides. So that total amount is about four point two million, as you said, Chairman Parent. Of that amount, one point two million is for grant award increases, and the carryover funds encompassed about three million of that. I'd ask for your approval.
Move for approval. Most have been made. Second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clark, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
She, she's stepped out.
Mr. Laye.
Yes.
Reverend Patello.
Yes.
Mrs. Schumay.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Pan.
Yes. Thank you. The reason why I looked at you, Dr. Wynn, is because Title One always comes under instructions. I haven't moved, I haven't moved that over here. Falk, you've got all that now. And I'm glad to see that we're, I mean, I assume the three million dollars that we have in carryover of Title One all goes to instruction, I mean salaries, because that's how you can get rid of it really quick. Good. Thank you. The next item is discussion of the February the twenty-first agenda.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Parent. And before I refer you to the agenda, Reverend Patello stole my thunder. I wanted to make sure that I thanked the finance department and our communications department for working tirelessly to get the budget together. Mr. Falk, of course, this is his first one that he's put together with us. I think he's done an outstanding job. He's come right in and fit right in. So I want to thank both departments for their work with this. The February twenty-first agenda is attached for your review. I think you had it maybe in, in board docs. So if you have any, if there are any questions or anything that you have at this time, you can let us know. If not, you feel free to email myself and Chairman Parent, and we will revisit anything that's sent to us.
Ms. Anderson, you see it's.
Yes.
Right. You had two names, but you only, only one. Okay. All right. Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda is discussion, and this is process for creating a three-panel board for disciplinary hearing. We have a policy filed, and it's BCEA. This is an optional policy that we have, according to Mr. Meekins, and you might want, you want to go ahead and speak to this policy?
I'm happy to. I don't think I can add a lot to the discussion. I understand that at the last meeting, which I was not present, there was some discussion about this committee being assigned to handle student discipline. So in preparation for this meeting today, I thought I would review the school board existing policies to see if there is a policy in place that will allow us to do that. I found reference to a policy that isn't in our policy manual. And so Ms. Stewart was kind enough to, right before the meeting, to go dig out this policy, which is listed as an option. So I suspect, without knowing, but I believe this policy was promulgated by the School Board Association for the schools that wanted to adopt it. We have not adopted it. It is listed as a reference only. So the, but the policy is very simple, and it just says that we will establish three-member committee, discipline committees.
Why don't you go ahead and read the policy.
Says a disciplinary committee composed of at least three school board members presides over all cases of student suspensions of more than ten days and expulsions within the blank Portsmouth School Division. The decision of the committee, if unanimous, is the final decision of the school board. In non-unanimous decisions, the student has the right to appeal to the full school board. The school board shall render a final decision in such cases on the appeal within thirty days of the committee decision. The disciplinary committee follows the procedure set forth in policy JGD slash JGE, student suspension slash expulsion. Membership on the disciplinary committee is determined by the school board. So that is, in my opinion, a promulgated policy by the School Board Association that you could adopt, that would give you then the policy, because the state code says you can only do this if you have a policy supporting your doing this. This would then give you the policy to allow you to implement the committees. There probably would be some rulemaking, procedural things that you would have to think about, how often they would meet, how the cases would be referred to them, whether they're standing committees. There's also, by the way, I did run across this, another school board policy that establishes standing committees, a discipline committee is not listed as one of the standing committees. My belief is.
We added that.
You did. You would have to. If it hasn't been done, it needs to be done if you're going to go to that to make them a standing committee. And so, and then off you go, the, each committee would have a chairman, or chairperson, to say that more properly, a chairperson that would preside over the committee hearing and so forth. There would be rules that would have to be promulgated to make sure that it functions uniformly, because you do not want non-uniform functioning of these committees. They should all function as the school board, and they should all function together. And I did mention one other thing to the chairman, just my opinion, not necessarily legal, but we certainly would hope that we could comprise three committees of, of, that are representative, each committee is representative of the will of the board at large. That, you know, you would not want the three most conservative members on one committee, the three most liberal on another. You would want to have it so that the committee responsibly represents the will of the board at large. If that can be done, and I'm sure it can be done.
And we need to add this policy to our meeting in the February twenty-first. The reason I wanted to be brought up tonight is that this is February, and this will add this to the, the agenda. Thing I want us to talk about tonight is there, there are different scenarios, and he's already given you one. There's another scenario that if, if during the month, say that we adopt this in February, and we have cases in March, then we would appoint, we would appoint three members. Ms. Chamus would have to treat it just like a meeting. It would have to be published in the paper, da, da, da. We could, we could, for the month of March, we would assign three members. In any case during that month, you got it. Then April, May. He's talking about having three different committee one, committee two, committee three. If we've got a lot of cases, then committee one, committee two, it depends. So I just kind of want to hear. Now, we do have a standing committee of the disciplinary committee, and that is Ms. Anderson and myself. It's kind of like, it was kind of recommended, which is not one of my favorites, is that she and I would be, that we would be the consistent two members of, of that committee, and we would rotate you. That is not my favorable. I don't, I don't like that, because, I mean, the reason is, we, we could be meeting every week, and we, we've got a life, and we've got, and I think the better way to do it is to rotate it. Now, whether we can do it, Mr. Meekins is going to look at other school divisions that have this, the three members, but I want us to begin to think, because I want to, I want to bring to you on the twenty-first a recommendation that you can approve so that we can begin in March implementing this. So I open the floor up for discussion. Mr. Lam.
Just two points that, that I see.
And you know the reason why we're doing this, is because we don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot with attendance, because if we don't do this, then a student can be out in a whole month. So we want to expedite getting, hearing these and getting, making decision, getting back from school.
Well, yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, too, because I mean.
I should have said that at the beginning.
This, in fact, this is, we've discussed having this anyway before.
Yeah.
The whole chronic absenteeism that came up. There is two points that I do want to bring up. The first one has to do with the policy itself as far as if we were to adopt that policy. My concern is that it says in there something about within thirty days of.
There would be an appeal to the full board.
Right.
From a split decision by a committee.
Right. So with that, i- if we're allowed to, I think we need to look at making that less. Instead of thirty days, maybe if we can drop that back fifteen or so. Here's why, and that might cause a lot of work or undue burden. My concern is that if we stay at thirty, you know, we're still at the same problem that we're at now, where a child is suspended from school, then they have the, the disciplinary hearing, which can be up to another ten days or so. Then it gets in front of one of the committee in and of itself, which could be within two weeks, so now you're up to twenty-four. If there's an appeal, then we're up to thirty. Now you're looking at several, several days. So if there's a way to change that, modify that from thirty days to another number that we all can live with, I think that would be more, most appropriate. In regards to your point of the fact that we are looking at absenteeism, that would be that. Second point, I do like your idea, Chairman Parent, with regards to having, looking at committee one, committee two, committee three, and I think that would be wise, because we should also look at setting a number with regards to cases. So for example, let's say one month, and we've had this before, where in one month you might have several cases.
Yeah.
You, I mean, you could have ten cases, you could have fifteen cases, you know. I think that whatever we do and we set up the policy, or if it's just a procedure that we do, that if in any given month, we have more than so many, I'm just saying randomly, more than ten, then the next committee comes online as well. So that way, if you have ten, now you've got five, because committee one's doing five, committee two's, you know, if you've got twenty, you know, then.
Forbid.
Well, yeah, that's right. Forbid, but then, though, you're looking at committee one's at ten, committee two's at, at ten. To me, it just looks like, or it seems that this would expedite this process and get these cases moving forward.
For the thirty days, this policy is, of course, backed by the BSBA.
Right.
Attorney. So if, whatever we do, if we change that, then we could, if there's, say there is, say that there is not a unanimous decision.
Mm-hmm.
It comes before, it could very well come.
The very next week.
The very next week.
Well.
Expedite that real quick.
And that's fine, and I would hope that, that's what I'm just saying, that we need to just get that wording in place to where, that we don't have a, a case that could, in theory, wind up being almost two months. So.
Ms. Anderson, Hines, and then Williams.
I just wanted to say to the board that there are pros and cons to this. The pro is, of course, we would be reducing absenteeism from the school. The con is, as you all know, when we do have our disciplinary hearings, we bounce off of each other, and sometimes when all of us are in a room, we do come up with the best decision. So that could affect it with the committee. Another alternative that me and Chairman Parent talked about is potentially when we have several hearings just doing. have, um, several hearings, um, just doing a, a session for hearings only, isn't that what we, with all of us there, um, if it's a certain amount, so all of us are present, just adding an additional meeting a month. So that is a, another alternative as well. So I just wanted to say that.
Please speak, 'cause we'd like to, oh, Ms., uh-
Sarah.
Hans, and then Ms. Williams.
A point of clarity and then a statement.
Right, please.
What Mr. Lamb is talking about, the thirty days, that's if there is a not unanimous decision-
Correct.
And an, an appeal is not immediate. The parent has to do that, correct?
Correct.
So it would be, it's not our, I mean, they have up to thirty days to appeal. We can know that night if they choose to appeal and can expedite it to the next meeting, but that still gives that parent thirty days to appeal, so it's not a mandated thirty. I'm just trying to make sure I understand it in my head that it's not a mandated thirty days.
Within thirty days.
And it's, and the appeal is the apparent, is the parent process.
That's right.
All right. Um, I think when, we had talked about it previous, I think it was, um, myself, Ms. Williams, and you, um, one of the things I had come, that just in conversation came up was, you have a three-person committee that, that mans this disciplinary committee for three or four months, and then it rotates. And so that would be a committee one, a committee two, and a committee three, and you put it within a rotation basis.
Right.
Um, I'm, I'm all for having a committee here, you know, the, the, the smaller committees so that we can get this in and get it moving-
Right.
Because I, I don't want to see kids out twenty-six days or forty-five days, especially around the holidays and spring break, 'cause we usually get a, a good number around the holidays and spring break because of stressors that are outside of our, um, but I would like to see three committees and have them rotate at will, and that could be, if we do get a lot of discipline cases, you pull in committee one, committee two, committee three. If we don't, then you just let them run for two or three months at a time and switch them out and give everybody a break. So, um, with that being said, I'm, I'm for the smaller groupings and however we decide to do it.
Okay. All right. Ms. Williams?
Uh, thank you Chairman Parent. Um, I, I just wanted to piggyback on what you were saying about the thirty day, and of course, we don't wanna do anything to go against, uh, BSBA's policy, but I think it was clarified-
Right.
Within the thirty day-
Within thirty days.
Period. And also there, there, I, I agree with Sarah, I, I agree with, uh, Board Member Atkinson as well, as far as the pros and cons of a smaller group, but also when we come together, sometimes we bounce things off and we change our mind, and, and you know, listening to everyone. And, um, I do know that we do have to do something to make sure the kids are back in school without keeping them out-
Right.
So long, but I, I, I'm kinda open to the, you know, the idea of us having a separate meeting where it's just hearings, where we can hear from everybody, and I'm kinda open to this, you know, I'm kinda torn. I, I do like the part of hearing a little board member together and, you know, I don't want us to get into the thing where we have three board members that, you know, might be more conservative, or might, might be too liberal, you know, and, uh, you know, then when we hear the results and we say, "Oh, well, why did you, you know, put the kid out?" Like, so, you know, I'm kinda-
Torn.
Yeah, kinda torn, I don't know.
Right. Uh, Ms. Allen, then Ms. Schumacher?
And to piggyback off of what, um, Ms. Williams is saying, um, if we had committees, would, would the entire board have access to the disciplinary packet like we do now? And if so, what would be the feeling of, as we read through something, us emailing the committee or having some kinda dialogue with the committee of our thoughts? That way, we still have a little bit of input, as long as there's still, you know, 'cause what I see and what someone else sees-
Right.
You know, and then going back to making sure we're following our policy.
Okay. I'm gonna ask-
So you, you run the risk of, when you only have three people that have one, are we gonna make sure that, you know, we're, are we sticking to the policy, or you can very wear veer one direction?
Right.
But if there's input, if, number one, I wanna make sure that we all have access to the information, even if there are separate committees.
Right.
And then secondly, um, how would we communicate our input to the committee? Of course, they will make the final decision, but there should be, if we're gonna go with committees, opportunities for us to have some input.
Good point. Ms. Meekins?
Counselor?
Let me, uh, I don't think there's any problem with everybody getting all the information. Well, you're, you're the board member, you have a right to have the information for the board. I, I don't think it's a problem. I get a little more concerned about whether that would free you up to contact people who are gonna hear a case that could somehow prejudice whether the person hears the case and makes a decision based upon the evidence in front of them, as opposed to some subtle pressure being brought by school board members. And, you know, I, I think it takes it a little bit out of the due process kind of, kind of a hearing environment, so I'm a little worried about that, but I would like to point out there's nothing magic to three. My point being that the, the proposed regulation or policy says at least three. So you could have five, so that you have a fuller flavor of the board without having it so narrowed down to three and still save substantial effort and time by other board members who don't have to sit on every hearing. So you could have four or five, uh, that would maybe give you a little more comfort that you, and everyone's position is well represented in regards to how they deal with these cases. But your specific question is, is, I would not say that is illegal. I would say that if I were to challenge a hearing, that would be something that I would raise a challenge on, that I don't know who decided this case, because the people that decided it may not have been free to decide as they chose to.
Then Ms. Schumacher, and then Mr. Lamb?
So, I agree with, um, the example of, um, Ms. Clu about us having an extra day, an extra meeting for all of us, because I think we're all saying the same thing. I don't think we want to have a sense of impropriety, where, uh, you know, someone can come back and say, "Well, I had a meeting with them and they voted this way. My situation was similar to someone else's and they voted another way." So I think it'd be easier and maybe a little bit more safe if we can all be in the meeting and bounce the ideas, bounce the, uh, situation, discuss the situation, and come up with, um, the conclusion so that we can just be consistent. We wanna be consistent.
Right.
So I think that's a great idea for us to have an additional meeting, um, aside from us doing, uh, small portions of three different or variations of, of groups to make decisions, so.
'Cause you're trying, I mean, the purpose of all this is to expedite-
Correct.
-is getting students, making a recommendation one way or the other so that they're not out.
Now, I do have a question.
Yes.
When we form these groups, do we have to have a certain amount, depending on how many we have, um, to have quorum? Is that what it is?
That was my question.
Yeah, because if that's, that's the case-
It's listed as a committee, not a, not a meeting.
Not, okay, okay, all right.
So it's the same as any of our other meetings, where there's only two or three?
Typically, you can't have three, because you have to announce it, I mean, that's a meeting.
Right, but that's what I was saying.
Announcing it as a big-
At that point.
This one says at least three, so you-
Right.
You, you have to have the meeting, which leads to the formal notice requirements-
Correct.
Et cetera.
That's correct.
But you, uh, I would assume, without knowing-
Mm-hmm.
That if two of the three showed up, you had a quorum, but I would not want to be operating on two board member meeting. I think it would require at least three.
Okay, so the reason why I said that, because if some people can't make that-
Right.
Extra meeting, is that okay for us to still-
If you had a full meeting-
Right.
If you don't left that five-
Okay.
That would actually attend, 'cause you would then have a quorum.
Right.
That was my question.
Okay.
Mr. Lamb?
After further listening to what everyone's saying, I, I'm, I'm good with, I'm okay with going either way, um, but it seems as though there's a consensus with regards to wanting all of us to be able to have an input or a say. So I could see us having an extra meeting, but I guess it would be, have to be then keep in mind, because again, we have seen, for those of us that's been here for a little bit, and those that are new, you're going to find out that, um, some months were pretty heavy-
Right.
Some months were pretty light. So if we do this extra meeting or so forth, then I guess that's gonna be, instead of us meeting two times a month, we could be meeting three times a month, or-
Or-
Four times a month, every Thursday. Um, and I guess it goes back to then again, I guess, the number with regards to, you know, say we're meeting this evening, and let's say we get packets for four students. Well, obviously, you know, next Thursday, that could be taken care of real quick, but let's say you've got ten, you know, does that then mean you divide that ten up, you know, for next Thursday or the following Thurs- I mean, you get what I'm saying-
Yeah.
With regards to, um, just because we have a designation of, of an additional meeting, that doesn't necessarily mean that you have to necessarily wait for that meeting to pile in everything. If there's a way to bring some of those even on a regular, I mean, that, that's possible too. But again, I'm okay with either way we go, committee or the additional meeting. I think there are some merits to what's being said-
Right.
With regards to all of us hearing, hearing the, the individual cases.
Okay. Ms. Williams?
Yeah, I, I was thinking that we meet twice a month anyway-
Right.
And if we add one, only if there are additional cases, right?
Right, right.
Not, not if we didn't-
Right.
Every time, right?
Right.
You're saying not every time, right? Right. I, I was saying, you know, when we-
Like this month, which probably won't happen.
We don't have that.
Right, right.
So we would only need to call the extra meeting if-
If we have.
If we had the cases.
Right.
And I think that might work better, because we, we really haven't been getting a whole lot of cases. I, I don't remember, do you?
Most of the ones we get are around the holidays.
Yes.
So you end up with an extraordinary amount of time out, because I do remember we had a couple that they were out from the end of November and we didn't see them until January.
Well, in that case, if the school is out or something, then we could call for us to have the meeting.
Special meeting.
But I do remember, was it last Christmas or-
Yes.
Christmas before, when we had about eight or nine?
It was last year.
When Mr. Parent was out and I had to do the meeting, that was one of those. But we were done by seven. Remember I told you all, we would come back?
Yeah.
If we weren't finished-
We had to do that before.
And we were finished.
Right.
And it was about nine.
Right.
So I think we can work it with the extra meeting and that way everybody, I think everybody would be comfortable, because I can tell you, what I, I foresee could happen, I think it's what maybe, uh, Ms. Allen was saying earlier, is that you might get some parents or something that are coming to different board members and say, "Well, why did you do this with my child and he did something else with the other in a similar situation?" And then, you know, then we're gonna have to call Dr. Bracy or somebody else, and it might turn out to be more of a headache than anything else. So, um, I, I think I would say if an extra meeting is needed, if we can get them, because we, I mean, we, we meet every other week anyway. And if we can get them in as quickly as possible, and I know you have the parent factor-
Mm-hmm.
Because you have to get the parents and all of that-
And the packet information.
That packet of information, is there any way we can speed it up, where, you know, like electronically?
We have notice requirements too, so you have to do that.
Right, and the notice requirement. So I think if we can do, if we could do an extra meeting where, I mean, I don't know-
Ms. Hans, Ms. Williams, are you, have you finished?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay.
And we've had instances where we've had special called meetings for discipline. I remember Dr. Bracy's first year here, the snow, I'm just gonna call them the snowball fights.
Quiet.
Um, you know, and where we ended up coming in on, you know, like three or four nights in a row to get them done, and I think too, when we get that backlog of cases, they're all coming from one school, because it's usually been a huge incident at a school. So I think it's just a scheduling thing that we need to make sure that everybody is aware of, that we can, that, that we as a board are flexible enough to have it at a, on another Thursday night or another Tues- and I mean, I just say, I'd say comfortable saying Thursday night, 'cause in my brain, school board is Thursday, and if you put it on a Tuesday, I'm liable not to show up, because that's not a school board night.
I agree.
Um, but I think, uh, we've had those special called meetings before, and I just think if we keep it with a Thursday night, now my only issue, my only concern-
Is you need five board members.
Is you need five board members, and if it's a special meeting, what are the, what are the notice requirements that Ms. Chambers and, and-
Same with, same as any other meeting.
So ten days in the paper, that was mine.
Okay.
See, it takes a week for, it takes a week, once we approve the agenda, like we've already done it for March, then she's got to have the paper, Virginia Pino has to have it a week-
Before.
Before, and then you've got the week, so it's a two-week thing.
What is the process for canceling that meeting? Because if we just say, let's say for instance, on the second and the fourth meeting, we have our regular nights, and on the first and the third, we set up for discipline nights as needed. What is the cancellation requirement? Because that way it's a standing meeting, it's already been posted, we've approved it within the month's agenda. How do we cancel it if we don't need it? I mean, if we make it a standing night, like the second and the fourth-
Put it on website, couldn't you, Mr. Meekins?
That'd be the only way I know to do it.
Yeah.
Put it on the website.
Reverend Patel?
And I think the pilot has been our chosen method of communicating, but that's not the required method.
No.
So we've chosen to put something in a week ahead of time, the two-week process.
Right.
You could easily put it on our website one day and give it the amount of, a lot of time that's needed to broadcast the meeting.
'Cause I know at one point-
You can, you can use the, uh, website, you can use channel-
Three days.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, you know, uh, whatever-
Three days is, three days is required.
Right, so you can put on the website, and three days later, we're gonna have a meeting, you know, but we've chosen to do the two-week route, so I think that would have to be looked at and adjusted, and that, that was my concern with having a separate meeting. If we were gonna use the pilot as our communication, it's defeating the purpose.
Yeah.
We will end up in the same situation.
Exactly.
So, what I'm hearing-
This is a policy committee meeting.
So what I'm hearing from this board is that we've talked about having one, two, three committee, we've talked about having an extra meeting, um, on the month, a separate meeting just to hear disciplinary committees. Uh, I've heard, uh, having a committee of four or five, and I'm hearing that you would want to have, or the direction I'm hearing the board is that we have an extra meeting as needed. Is that what I'm hearing from the board? Everybody shaking their heads, then that looks good, then we don't need to worry about setting up a committee. Well, that's why I'm glad, I'm glad we discussed this, because-
We will.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
And another-
And Ms. Atkinson.
I'm not gonna, I was asking anything, but, um, the communication is gonna be tedious and difficult, even from Ms. Chambers' point of view, of having to try to schedule the meetings as they come in, and the parents, I believe, have thirty, always have thirty days to appeal also, right?
No.
No.
How long do they have to appeal, uh, expulsion?
I think it's ten at most.
Ten days, I thought.
Ten days, so you always have to wait at least a ten days if you haven't heard-
But then we-
From the parent also, it, it's just-
Well, you gotta do that regardless.
Whether it was, maybe three or four.
But we're not waiting a month, that's the thing.
So if you, if you wait the, the ten days, then how are we gonna communicate the message out? That would definitely have to change unless you're gonna wait another fourteen days through the pilot.
No, I thought you said we could communicate that on the website.
If we choose to do that.
Yeah.
Right.
That'd be the quickest way to do it, so.
We, we haven't been doing it as well.
I know it.
Right.
'Cause we followed the same pattern, because-
Well, I, I believe as long as it is the public notification-
Correct.
Yeah, 'cause when we go into that hearing, it's closed session.
Correct.
The public can't come in anyway.
That's correct.
But we must notify the public.
And you said, Mr.?
I don't, honestly, I haven't looked at that, so I don't want to get out on a limb here and mislead you, but I would like to look at whether we have to notify the public, we have to notify the press of a closed meeting. Because I think that the press has a right to attend a closed meeting, or at least be aware of it. I don't know that the public has a right to know that we're having a closed meeting where they're not allowed to be in attendance anywhere. I need to, I need to look at that. That's where we're going.
We do know from that situation that we had, when we hired Dr. Bracy, and we did not notify the press.
The press.
The press has to be notified.
And I'm watching Ms. Gregory back there.
So that's how we came up with the public notification, with the pilot and all of that.
Virginia Pilot.
Reverend Patillo, I apologize for not.
Yeah, the last thing I was going to say is that if we were to have a vote, that's fine, but I would prefer to have Mr. Meekins explore all the options and then come out with a recommendation.
I just don't want to put this off because this is March.
Let's not vote on it.
We're just discussing tonight.
That's why we're discussing it tonight. I don't, because March, April, May, done. I mean, school year's over with. Ms. Agnes, are you finished, Reverend Patillo?
Yeah, I'm finished.
Ms. Agnes.
Okay, I was on the same lines of Reverend Patillo with the notification, so I don't want to plot meetings in, I want to just do notices as they come, because that will be a lot of work on Cathy to continuously send those out and then cancel. So I don't think it's going to be as many as we think it is.
Right.
So I would want to explore the option that Reverend Patillo was saying of putting it on our website and our page versus plotting each week and then if we don't cancel it. Because I really don't think it's going to be that many that we're going to have.
Mr. Meekins, can you, I mean, can you, if we put it on the website, does that satisfy the requirements of the press?
Does that satisfy the press requirement?
Yeah, he looked, will you research?
I will. I don't want to answer that at this moment unless I have to. If I do, you're going to get a bad answer, probably. So, but I can give you an answer very quickly on that. I can give you an answer by email probably Monday or Tuesday. I just need to look at what's going on. And what the issue, make sure I understand, issue is the notice requirement to the public and/or the press in regards to an emergency or a special meeting call for discipline purposes, which will be obviously exclusively a closed session.
Yes.
There'd be no other public business could be transacted, it would just be a closed session. What are the notice requirements and for that?
And I think you said that Reverend Patillo said that Virginia Beach chooses their website.
Yeah. I'm sure that, I'm sure.
They do, they do. And you.
I just want to make sure we're okay. Yes, sir.
And I'm not an expert, but I know you have to do one notification for the public and then one notification for the press.
For the press?
Yeah.
I knew you had to notify the press.
Or would you please?
I would, I would grant you.
Main thing, board, I just want to get this on the agenda so we approve it and move forward. I mean, we're getting into March, April, May, ding, bingo, school's out. So we've gone through it, and it's still, I know that, I don't want, I don't want to delay this. I want us to make a decision, move forward, try it, because we can always change it. We can always change it if it doesn't work.
Yep.
All right. All right, let's move on. The board members' reports. I just want to report that the city council liaison, and that's Reverend Patillo and myself, met last evening. We had a very productive meeting with Lisa Lucas Burke and Mr. Clark, and Dr. Bracy, and of course Reverend Patillo and myself, and city manager. And we spent about two hours, and I think we had really good dialogue. What they're recommending, and she came in before the meeting, and she's checked with all the council members, and they're recommending that on February the 23rd, which is a Saturday, from 8:30 to 3:30, that we have a joint retreat with the school board and the city council. They're going to be bringing in a facilitator that will facilitate the meeting. It's not going to be agenda items, it's going to be kind of similar to what we went through last night. And it's bringing both groups together so that we get to know each other, and we develop communication and have more open dialogue so that we, we're coming from it at a different angle, Ms. Hines, so that we're all kumbaya, trying to understand each other so they understand us and what we go through, and we try to understand what they go through. So they've all, they're all of an agreement of the 23rd. Now, on March the 11th, there will be, we're not going, we canceled the February 25th meeting. That meeting is going to be March 11th at about 30. Yeah. On March 11th. So the February 25th meeting has been canceled, and that meeting has been moved to March the 11th. That's a Monday. And I just need to, I hope that you will all agree that we can have this joint retreat together away from school system, away from, I mean, they're looking at areas, they're looking at places, and they're paying for it. I want them to, they're paying for it, and they're paying for this facilitator. And I think it would be a great opportunity because as long as I've been on this board, we've never done this. And I think it would help build relationships, build communications, and get us off on the right foot as we begin this whole process of budget process. So.
Can I go back on something, sir?
Yes, sir.
Oh. Want to answer the question for the board?
Oh, okay, go, great, that's great.
Looking at Virginia Freedom of Information Act, which is also a closed meeting act, and it says, "Notice for special meetings. When it is necessary to hold a special or emergency meeting, notice of such meeting must be given simultaneously with the notice provided to the school board members. Such notice must be reasonable under the circumstances. For example, if you have time to get the notice published in the local newspaper, i.e. before the publication deadline, then you should do so. Also, you should post notice of special emergency meetings at the locations described for regular meetings, although the same time requirement does not apply." So when you're told of a meeting, there has to be a notice published of the meeting on the website, an attempt to get it in the newspaper, if you can get it in the newspaper.
And a temp.
Yeah. If the deadlines do allow.
Can I?
Yes.
Two comments to that. Number one, I'm glad that a newspaper doesn't.
Wait a minute, before we switch hands, I want to be able to have Ms. Chambers notify the clerk that we are all in agreement, and the 23rd is.
What's the time again?
It will be from 8:30, and they'll have breakfast, and then we'll.
I don't worry you all not to go for me, but I can't fill it, do I have prior commitments? But that's, that's fine.
Yes.
And you said that we don't know where we're meeting?
They're working on a place, and they're going to notify us.
So it sounds like it's not going to be local?
Well, I think, I think it will end up being, I can't, well, what we worked on last night was away, and that fell through. So they're looking at some, two other options, but it's going to be offsite. I mean, we're not going to meet in here, we're going to be offsite.
In a neutral location?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's like the Super Bowl, nobody plays on home field court.
Ms. Allen.
Okay, so it's 8:30 to what time?
8:30 to, I'll be, 3:30.
3:30.
And I mean, it's kind of short notice.
I know.
Is there no other option of, and I mean, of dates? Have we given options of dates, or this is pretty much, this is the date?
The reason being is that the city manager is going to be presenting her budget on March the 20th, and we want to be able to go ahead and have this retreat, this dialogue between the two bodies, so that when we begin to have the joint meeting on March the 11th, because we're going to have items on the agenda, and we need to be able to get to know each other because they're new people, and we felt both the school board and the city liaison, we felt this is a good, a good start. We've never had it before, and they're open and willing to do it, and I think that we, honestly, as a board member, I think this is a great idea. And the reason it has to be is because March the 11th is the joint meeting where we're going to, we'll have an agenda, and then two, through almost two weeks later, she's going to be presenting her budget.
And it's not that I don't think it's a good idea, it's just more so of the timing factor, and if we're already having a joint meeting with them, could that not be handled during the joint meeting that we're having? Because I'm pretty sure we're going to discuss some of the same things we would discuss.
No. At the retreat, we're not discussing any agenda items. At the retreat, there's an outside facilitator, we're going to be doing team activities we're going to be doing, getting to know each other, those kinds, we're not discussing any agenda items. That is going to be discussed on March the 11th. Two different meetings, two purposes. Yes, sir. Mr. Park.
Open to the public?
Yes, absolutely, it's open to the public. Okay. So the only person at this point would be Mrs. Williams, will not be. Okay. Well, go ahead.
I will not be there in attendance, have some plan in it. But if possible, I would, I would like to attend if we can move it to another date. But like she said, it's kind of short notice.
I will, I mean, all we can do, Dr. Bracy, is, I mean, then you're getting into. That's all we can do.
Well, usually, when people plan meetings for you, they do give you options. Maybe one or two, you know, they don't come back and say, this is it.
Well, this is.
You have very busy meetings.
This is February the 7th. The 16th was not, the facilitator was not available, and then the next Saturday, because we wanted to do it on a Saturday, because all of us, you know, some of us work, and so we want everybody to have an opportunity. So the 23rd was the earliest. Then the next Saturday would throw us into March the 2nd. And then we're going to meet on the, you know, would be March 2nd. No, I just said that's the next time, that's a date we can propose, is March 2nd. March 11th is when we have the joint meeting. The joint meeting is March the 11th. That's done, okay? This retreat is just for us to do team building and getting to know each other and working together. That's what this is about, all right?
Okay.
Okay? Now, do you want me?
I'll be there.
I want the clerk to find out if.
That's all right, just go on with who can.
I think we can do a consensus, if the majority can't be there, then we don't need to do it, so.
Yes, sir.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes, please do.
Since it seems as though that this has caught everyone, most of us off guard and so forth, can we look at our schedules and then get back to you or the clerk within the next 48 hours?
Sure.
With this?
That's fine.
Just an email?
But I need to let them know because they've already polled their city council, and everybody's okay.
Okay, so then we will send you an email over the next 48 hours if we can do this or not?
We'll see if the second, in other words, if the 2nd of March is good for everybody, because I really would like everybody in this room, we all need to be together.
I'm not available the 2nd of March?
Well, then. All right, let's get consensus.
Yes, I'm in. Does she make, interrupt?
Oh, no, I'm in, yeah.
Ms. Allen? Okay.
As of right now, yes.
I want to be in, but I can't.
And you're not. And you are, and I am. Okay. We can't get everybody, so. Now, you, I mean, there's a possibility that you could be there. Is that what you're saying? That's okay, it's all right.
Could I attend some of it? Is that possible?
Sure.
I could, I'll let you know.
Okay, all right. Ma'am.
Who am I telling her that's going to?
You're letting her know, February the 23rd is a go for the board, but we're not, but three members will not be there.
Three?
Oh, two.
I mean, two. That's correct. All right? And you put that on your schedule, also put on March the 11th is the joint meeting, and take off the 20th.
We don't even know if could, because she had left a real check.
But you still have a form.
Yeah, we do. It just would be nice. All right. You've got a, you received a copy from me. I told you, yes, ma'am.
CSEP met yesterday, and I just want you to know, I do have a written report that you'll have in time for the next meeting.
I'm going to get to that next.
Okay. I wasn't sure if you were moving on for.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
No, I'm just moving. Y'all received a copy of what I, I told you that I wanted this board to be a Board of Distinction, and what I did is I just, I took the area, the date scheduled, and date completed, and this is kind of a plan we're going to put together, we're putting together so that I think in, at the DSBA conference in November 2021, there's no reason why we can't be a Board of Distinction. The only thing that keeps us is that, number 10, each member of the board achieve at least certificate recognition for at least two years, so we've got two new board members. So otherwise, I think we will be able to make it. We do have, I just found out from this, number six, we do have a three-year communication plan, so we can check that off. And then the number 11, Reverend Patillo attends a lot of those, and then I understand that there are others that can't attend, and we'll be able to do that. And then number 12, we do, we do, we're looking at DSBA Business Honor Room, Dr. Bracy's helping us with that. We've done the bullying prevention month, so I think in two years, we can apply and we can become a Board of Distinction. All right? Now, Ms. Allen, subcommittee reports.
I said that I would be providing that. We met yesterday, CSEP met yesterday, and you'll have your report in time for the next meeting.
Okay. And.
I'll be submitting it to the clerk for disposal.
The special committees, and I'm just going to go through each one of them, the budget and finance, we meet on a monthly basis, and the responsibility, I'm not reading that, but it says the committees shall meet at, meet once a month. So we will be, Reverend Patillo and I will be reporting out once a month. That will be on the agenda of the finance meeting. The city liaisons, once a quarter, and they agreed last night, you correct me, they agreed last night that we want to meet on a quarterly basis, we want at least four times this year because we barely got one in last year.
You only had one.
You had one. So we want to do at least four, and the more we communicate, and that's what we said last night, communicate, communicate, the better off we're going to be. The corporate sponsorship, as often as necessary. Curriculum and committee, at least bimonthly, but yes.
I was just saying, our next meeting is February 20th, so we'll have a, we'll have a committee report for the next board meeting.
21st.
Yes.
Human resources, at least bimonthly, and that is, and one of the things when I got on the board, and I just, I just threw this out, is that when I was assigned the committee, my committees, I didn't know when, I didn't know, no one told me, no one told me when they were meeting, and it was very frustrating because I didn't know it, as a board member, I had to initiate the meeting, but I found out that it is the staff person, Dr. Bracy, that needs to initiate the committee so that the board members are invited to attend. That's not our responsibility, is to initiate a meeting with the standing committees. We need to, the staff needs to say, we're going to have a meeting, you're invited to come, and we go. All right?
Let me say that we're going to give you dates.
Exactly.
And let you know that.
Right. The legislative and policy, well, y'all are going to have a good time because that really is when DSBA dumped all those policies on you, and you'll have a long, long meeting. Minority contractors, as necessary. Technology and operations. Yes, sir. You got, great.
Yeah. Technology and operations committee, we did meet on January the thirtieth, last Wednesday, and in attendance was Mr. Whiting, Director of Facilities Services, Mr. Herb Robinson, Coordinator of Facilities and Maintenance, Mr. Privet, the Coordinator of Transportation, Mr. Gelhoff, the Food Services Manager and Coordinator, and Dean Schleffer, the Director of Information Technology. It was a great meeting. We did go over some information as far as the nutrition and, from Nutrition Department, and they gave us some very interesting information that I, I wasn't aware of, and as far as the division goes, as of right now, even during the summertime, they provide thirty-one feeding sites during the summertime for children to receive meals during the summer when we're out of school. And also, as of right now, all of our schools are eligible, well, are receiving free breakfast from the school division now also, so that was a great thing that we found out at the meeting. Also, something that we're getting information together on, and I wanted to ask the board, we're, we're working on a possible proposing a program for students to allow them to work towards a master license in the areas of HVAC and electrician. Right now, for our HVAC, we pay a contract of about eight-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars per year. If we were able to actually fill five HVAC positions and a couple of technician salary positions, we could possibly save about three-hundred-and-fifty thousand a year, but we wanted to know if we could possibly establish a program to use our own students to be certified in those areas. So, they're actually getting information on that now, that I can put a report together, present to the board, we ought to review, and that will actually be a 2021 budget item, but I like to do things in advance, so we can start talking about it early and possibly get that in our thoughts and see what else we could possibly do as far as that's concerned. Also, we met with the Governor's School of ours yesterday, I'll give you more information on that, but we do have a, a camp that's being offered July seventh through the thirteenth during the summer for rising seventh through ninth grade students. It's a two-hundred-dollar early registration fee, and it's a vocal arts camp, and so we can try to get that information out also to our students. I did notice that the enrollment in the Governor's School for Portsmouth has gone down every year. So, maybe about four years ago, we may have had about sixty-five students registered. Now, we're at about sixteen, so that's something that I was talking with Dr. Bracy about, that we can see maybe it's a promotional or communication issue that we could possibly do within the school divisions with Guidance Council, so we can actually look at that more also, but I have more information for that next time we meet also.
Okay. We do, Mr. Meekins, we do have additional special committees, one is the CTE, and that's Ms. Hines and Ms. Sheu-Mei. The ad hoc student disciplinary committee, we do have a disciplinary committee, and that's myself and Ms. Atkinson. And then we have a wellness committee, and Mr. Lamb and Mr. Barnes are going to get us physically fit. You're going to have us out there, you're young men playing football, and you're going to have us riding a bicycle.
Yeah, we're doing a hundred mile.
Oh.
I'm doing that.
Main thing is that we have standing committees, and we need to be active, and I'm going to put it on the agenda and notify you that we're going to, you, you're going, you're going to be responsible for having a committee report, and Dr. Bracy's going to work with his staff to make sure they call a meeting and you're invited, so that we are all working together. Reverend Patillo.
I probably need to rephrase that. I want to know if I have permission from the board for the committees to actually explore that possible program for the students in the HVAC program.
Great, I'd like to learn something. Let me ask you this, the students with this camp, the students have to pay, or we, or do we supplement, do we, we don't have funds?
Students have to, have to.
Okay.
Do we not have any scholarships?
Yeah, I was going to ask the same.
I guess there'll be a finance committee, uh. Issue at the next meeting. As of right now, the gov, the actual Governor's School, they don't have scholarships, but it's probably up to the actual school divisions if they want to try to sponsor some of their students.
When is open enrollment for that? Isn't it in August or something?
The second one, he says the scholarships are provided for the second one.
Oh, for the second one, yeah, I was talking about this one here.
Two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars.
I believe it's before, I think it's July or June, but I'll check, I'll get that.
And the second one you have is, that is provided by their scholarships for that?
Yeah, this, this is actual theater, a three-week theater intensive, and they do have scholarships for that. And I wanted to say that we have Portsmouth students who are performing on Broadway from Churchill High School. So, we have some great students that have come through that program, and I really think we can just promote it more and really bring ours back strong to the city.
We do, we do.
Okay, if there are no other reports, and if there's no other business, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Second.